Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call us to order, and Commissioner Atkins will be joining us shortly. I'm going to ask my fellow commissioners, do you want to wait until he comes, or do you want us to proceed?
I say proceed.
I've got three proceeds. That shows you how much we think of J.A., so there we go. I will call us to order, and I'll ask my fellow commissioner, Commissioner Terry, to lead us in a moment of prayer.
If you'll bow with me, please. God Almighty, we thank you for the gift of life and opportunity to serve the people of our city. We ask that you help us to act with character and conviction, to listen with understanding and goodwill, and to speak with charity and restraint. Give us a spirit of service and guide us to be the leaders your people need. Help us to listen with humility, open minds and spirits. Renew our spirits to appreciate the joy of helping to build a community worthy of the human person. In your goodness and love, amen.
The late J.A. Glad you could join us. We're going to be led tonight in the Pledge of Allegiance by a gentleman that has given a lot of service to the city of Danville. And as maybe one last bit of service, I'd like Mr. Robert Cloyde to come before us and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Put me on the spot. Everybody join in, in case I mess up. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
To the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
Well, I didn't prepare a speech, so...
We're not there yet.
Okay.
You can relax.
All right.
We changed our mind.
All right.
Commission, you have before you tonight's agenda. Unless I hear otherwise, I will assume it meets with your approval. Okay. We'll move right on to the section of the meeting called "Hear the Public." This is the opportunity for the public to speak on any agenda item. Any agenda item. Going once, going twice, moving right along. Item one, approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, that being March 26, 2018. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Thank Commissioner Sears. How about a second?
Second.
Mr. Atkins, additions, corrections? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, like sign. Motion carries. Item two, now, Mr. Cloyde and Mr. Flue.
I don't think that microphone's on. Are you going down there?
Yeah. Where is it?
Turn your mic on there, Ken. I don't think it's on. Oh, it is.
All right. Rob, I'm here to recognize you for your 20 years of service with the city of Danville. It was great pleasure serving with you and having you on shift and duty. And I also know that you've put many years in with the Air National Guard out of Louisville. Very proud of you doing that and serving the country. And for that, we have a few tokens of appreciation.
One is your own personal case knife, in red, to commemorate your service.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. You're welcome.
Now, Rob, this might look familiar to you.
Oh, it does.
It is another small token, your service helmet that you wore during your time here and for you to take home and enjoy and remember us in your days of retirement.
I will. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Again, I didn't prepare a speech, but a lot of years, and time flies by fast. A lot of good friends, a lot of good memories, some bad. That's all I got.
Where are y'all going? That cake's not going anywhere. Sit down.
Hey, guys, make sure he takes cake home to his family.
Fun bunch. Item three is a proclamation for 911 telecommunications week. And if I may, all right, somebody help me. Who's got that? Where is that? There it is. Never mind. I'll get it together. Who's coming? There she is. Look at you all dressed up. This is a proclamation for the National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week for April the 8th through the 14th, 2018. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Danville, Boil County 911 Center. And whereas the public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our police officers, firefighters, and EMS by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas public safety telecommunicators of the Danville, Boil County 911 Center contribute daily to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients in the performance of their job. And whereas Danville telecommunicators exhibit compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job, therefore be it resolved that Mayor G. Michael Paris and the city of, in the Danville City Commission, on this ninth day of April 2018, declares the week of April 8th through the 14th, 2018, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Danville, Boil County, in honor of the women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe. Thank you. Personal privilege, if I may, these folks do an incredible job behind the scenes. Every successful police intervention, every successful fire intervention, every successful EMS run starts with these folks. And they work diligently, intently, and I'm sure that I understated when I say many times it's a frantic voice on the other end of the phone, and you're trying to calmly extract specific actual information from them.
Absolutely.
And without you starting that successful chain of events, the end result would not be as good as it is. And I want to thank you for, and the entire 911 group, for all you do.
Thank you so much.
If you're going to say anything?
If you guys get a chance, if you know them, they're parts of this community as well. That's why they have such a strong tie and such a strong commitment to our center. They're part of this. Every one of the responders are our brothers, sisters, family members, and our job is to get them home safe. The citizens are our family members as well. So we're the first one on the line and the last one to know how it ended. So if you get a chance, please thank them. They work incredibly hard. So, thank you.
Item four is the proclamation for the National Volunteer Appreciation Week. And I've asked Commissioner Terry to lead us in that proclamation, please.
If we can back up a second, I'll move to accept the previous proclamation.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, like sign. Motion carries. Now, item four.
Now, I will read the proclamation. Whereas National Volunteer Week is a time to honor that fundamentally American idea, people of different backgrounds, faiths, and points of view recognize that despite differences, we are bound together with a common destiny by virtue of being a local citizen of this great nation. And whereas National Volunteer Week is a week that focuses national, state, and local attention on the vital role of citizens serving as volunteers and being an integral part of our civic leadership. Whereas National Volunteer Week is a time to renew that fundamentally American principle of citizen service and responsibility, and also a time to recognize the men, women, and children who put that principle into practice by assisting and strengthening their community through service as citizen volunteers. And whereas many citizens volunteer and serve on a wide variety of boards and committees for the city of Danville, such as beautification, architectural review, parking, streetscape, sister cities, housing authority, human rights, planning and zoning, parks and recreation, cemetery, airport, economic development, ethics board, senior citizens, tourism, and others. And whereas, in recognition thereof, Mayor G. Michael Paris and the Board of Commissioners of the city of Danville hereby declare the week of April 15th through the 21st, 2018, as National Volunteer Week. And we urge all residents of Danville to observe this week by volunteering and service projects throughout our city, and join us during this week to recognize and thank our many citizen volunteers for their dedication and service to the people of the city of Danville.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. How about a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Terry. I defer to her.
I would, too.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, like sign. Motion carries.
Let's do a round of applause for our volunteers.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah. There they are.
I was going to say, we would not get nearly as much done without our volunteers.
That's right.
That is correct.
Probably nothing.
Item five is proclamation for Earth Day. Commissioner Sears, if you would.
Sure. Be glad to. Hello. Okay. Earth Day Proclamation, 2018. Whereas water is vital to all forms of life, safe drinking water is essential to human life, and water plays an important role in world and national economies. And whereas almost all of the world's population gets drinking water from lakes, rivers, and reservoirs. And within 10 years, it is predicted that half of this population might face water shortages. And whereas half of the world's major rivers are polluted or depleted, 40% of the rivers and lakes in the United States are too polluted for swimming or fishing, and forests and wetlands' natural purifiers for water are disappearing at an alarming rate. And whereas Boyle County is within the Dix River Watershed Project, which has made clean water a priority in Harrington Lake, Clark's Run, and Hanging Fork Creek, and within the watersheds of the Kentucky, Ohio, and Mississippi Rivers. And whereas Boyle County is within Kentucky's karst terrain, which with its springs, caves, and sinkholes is subject to groundwater pollution. And whereas the Danville, Kentucky City Commission hereby encourages its residents, businesses, and institutions to use the week of April 16th to 22nd to celebrate clean water and support actions which provide it. Now therefore be it resolved that Mayor G. Michael Paris and the City Commissioners of the city of Danville, on this ninth day of April 2018, hereby pledges to support initiatives which provide education, public policy, and consumer activities involving clean water on planet Earth. I would also like to recognize, and he's standing, Dr. Miles.
Do I hear a motion that we...
Move that we accept it into the record.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Any discussion? Call the question, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, like sign.
Present this to him.
Certainly. Because he goes next anyway with a banner request. Preston, thank you.
Thank you so much. I urge all the commissioners to join us on Saturday, the 21st. This year, we have expanded beyond the Saturday festival to include a variety of activities the week before, including tours of the recycling center, volunteer opportunity, installing new rain garden at our water filtration plant, and public tours of the water filtration plant are available coming week.
Great. Thank you. Are we having a bike ride that same day?
What?
The bike ride that same day?
Well, this is a week-long activity, but on Saturday, we're having the bike ride. That's correct. Yeah.
So we have a request for the banner.
I'll offer a motion to approve the Earth Day 2018 banner be displayed.
Motion's made by Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Sears. Discussion? I'm assuming it meets the approval as city manager. No further discussion. I'll call the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, like sign. Motion carries. Item seven is the introduction of the new Danville, Boil County Chamber of Commerce Director. Ms. Myrna Miller, who's not the new director, but is going to introduce.
Interim. I'm over the interim, too. I would like to introduce to you all our new executive director for the Danville, Boil County Chamber of Commerce, Jeff Jewell. And Jeff has, is coming to us most recently from Louisville, but he has worked all the way over in Oregon, on the Oregon coast. He has worked in the great state of Texas, and in Indiana, and now he is a Kentuckian. And he's a Danvillian, too. He's already moved in. But I want to say that he comes to us with experience with chamber work, with tourism work, with city government work, but he's ours, y'all. Don't be grabbing at him already. He is our whole community. This guy is going to do great things for us in the community. He was a unanimous choice by our search committee, and you'll soon find out why when you meet him. And his enthusiasm is infectious. You'll be laughing. You'll be working with him. So we're so glad to have him, and I know y'all will be, too. And you, you know.
That's a little pin we give to our honored guest. That's a copy of the key to the city. You're to wear it every day from now on.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank everyone for the warm welcome I've received since I landed in Danville just a few weeks ago and got, well, moved in, stuff still in boxes, but I'm here now. And I'm really looking forward to working with everyone in the community, getting to know everyone better. And it's just an awesome town, and I hope to help you make it even better. Thank you.
Thank you. Look forward to working with you. Myrna, thanks for your interim work, too. Keeping the lights on. Item eight is building a community of artist entrepreneurs project with an introduction from Mimi Becker.
Thank you. 20 years ago, when the Arts Commission was, I guess, established, it was given the charge of building the arts in the community in whatever way it could. So as time has passed, we have felt that we really are a community of artists, but we also need to expand and be a community of arts businesses. So the Arts Commission applied for a grant with the Louisville Fund for the Arts. It's a matching grant, so we're working on our match. But the project is specifically to develop five teams of artist mentors and apprentices. The artist mentors are to be artists who have demonstrated the ability to work at a high level in their craft, as well as to be business people, to promote and market themselves, and then to grow that next generation of artists. We will seek applications from students who have demonstrated to their teachers and others that they have the arts discipline to work in the future as professional artists. There are three components of the program. One is that the teams work together in developing the craft. And secondly, another part is to come together as a full group of 10, or perhaps even 12, to meet with and work with community leaders, business people, government people, volunteers, to see where it is that the arts can develop as businesses, and how they can fit into the community, and how the community can also associate with arts, artist businesses. One of the aspects of this is that we are paying for the business licenses of the apprentices so that they will be fully compliant, and that when they come to the gallery halls, they will be legal. The third component is that we are going to study across the state several, five in particular, programs that have demonstrated their expertise in developing arts as business, particularly Berea, Paducah, Louisville, Frankfurt, and in eastern Kentucky, and hopefully at the Jesse Stewart Foundation. So I just wanted to inform you all of that. We are actively raising the funds to meet the match. We are one of only 15 organizations across the state. We're up there with the big boys, Actors Theater, Louisville Ballet, and all of that now, so we feel pretty good. And so I just wanted to keep you all apprised of what we are looking at in the future, not just art for art's sake, but art as contributing to the economic development of our community. Any questions?
Any questions for Mimi? No, but whatever you do, you do it to the fullest.
Well, we're getting there.
There you are.
Thank you.
Thank you. Wait a minute. Hold on. Go ahead.
You set up to 12 interns?
Yeah, we'll have team, the teams are five. The grant application was for five teams of two. If we exceed the grant amount, they will not match the additional monies, but if we go over the grant amount, then we intend to use it to bring in another team.
Yeah, my thought is that a way to show some support for this is we might consider waiving the, might I tell you?
We might consider waivering the business license fee for the interns.
Well, we want to be business people, and that's one of the goals that I have had as Arts Commission Executive Director, is to really show that artists need to be business people.
I agree.
And we need to be that part of the community. And if it's a requirement that we have business licenses, then we have business licenses.
But your interns could be high school students, right?
Yes, but some of these interns, one in particular, one of the apprentices, is already partners in a beginning operation. So I mean, I thank you for your willingness to do that, but we really do want to do this in the way that we're promoting the business part of developing. We've already sponsored two consultants in, to work with artists in marketing promotions and technology. So those kinds of things are what we want to do and grow.
Mimi, if somebody wanted to give, how would they do that?
They can go to Arts Match at the Fund for the Arts in, online, and just scroll down. It's right there. And you can go online, or, I have to say, the Fund for the Arts is a first-class operation. Not only do they cover the fee for a credit card donation or a debit card donation, so every dollar you give goes directly to us, matched dollar. But also, if you prefer not to do it online, you can write a check to the Fund for the Arts, give it to me, and then I send it, and they credit it for the dollar-for-dollar match. And we welcome donations to May 31st.
And what's your total you're raising?
We need to match half of $7,125, $7,125 is the total grant, and so we need to match half of that. Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's interesting, yeah.
Item nine is a zone change approval recommendation for Center College. Mr. Steve Hunter.
Thank you. And you hear the screen going down behind you. We thought it'd be easier just to do an overview of this zone change, and it was unique zone change request, showing you a couple exhibits.
Lights, please, if you've got them.
It's going to lighten up there in just a second. So let's just start. This isn't a typical zone change. This was a zone change conversion project for Center College. And what you see in front of you is actually, was an exhibit for a site plan approval. Planning Commission did three documents last Wednesday. They approved a plat, and I'm going to get my pointer out here, if I can find it. And the plat, they approved a plat, consolidation plat in this area, and then there was a site plan approval, and there was a zone change. Now, this is the site plan exhibit that Center College gave us to get approved, and it really was the case after the zone change, but I'm showing it to you first simply because it was relevant, and it's what triggered the zone change request. And let me just back up a second and tell you that we had a meeting with Center College that the mayor was in, the city manager was in, Earl was in, myself, Center College folks and their consultant about this project, on how they basically build the dorm that you see to the north, up there at the top. That was the project. And after the meeting, or during the meeting, we all discussed the process of getting this approved as far as moving dirt. One thing that, I guess, me being somewhat of a novice really to Center College and some of the land development history, I didn't realize most of the college was zoned residential. So with that, it was suggested that we ought to fix Center College zoning. So there's the college, and it's pretty big. And it was suggested that we have a district called Institutional Campus Development, or ICD, in the book. Been in there since 2004. It's for academic, it's for campus environment, it's for colleges. It's a minimum of at least 15 acres. It was built for Center College, really. And this was, what we decided to do was convert the entire campus, 105.91 acres, in one big swoop to get it basically in a zoning district more suitable for their future growth, for doing that dorm, for representing what a campus environment is. And I'll show you in just a second, but we found that the campus was actually in seven different zoning districts, the majority of which was small lot residential. And again, just goes back to, college has been here a long time. Zoning was adopted in 1947 or so. I'm not exactly sure on that exact date. But then in 2004, we adopted a new ordinance, and you could question why it wasn't converted in 2004 when we created a district for the college. But 14 years later, I think what Center indicated to me was what they've done is get variances and conditional use permits in a piecemeal fashion as they've done projects. So again, it was suggested, why not convert the entire campus in one swoop? And that's basically this zone change request you have in front of you. It's a housekeeping exercise to take that 105.91 acres, and I'll go back to that. And again, looking at all these zoning districts, this is walnut, maple, so this is the corner. That's residential, small lot. That's residential, large lot. You see highway commercial. You come down, you see GRC, some industrial, again, small lot residential. This side of the campus is where the dorm would be, McMillan, Louise, this small lot residential, mixed, some mixed zoning this way, and even as you go down further south, more residential, and then to some GRC, which was done in later years, which is general residential civic. Those districts aren't very conducive to doing development with building heights and setbacks that Center needs. So that goes the other directions. Let's go back this way. So again, it was suggested that we just convert the entire campus from seven different zoning districts to ICD. We looked at the comprehensive plan. Interestingly enough, as we do with all zone changes, and it was shown as public, semi-public, in compliance with the comprehensive plan. Not only that, it also met the state directive on how you convert zoning when it's an inappropriate zone or needs to be reclassified. So it met the state directive and the comp plan. The Planning Commission met last week and voted to send you guys a recommendation of approval to, again, convert that tract from seven different zoning districts to ICD. Some folks from Center are here. Jamie's here. He may want to say something. Project was really housekeeping in nature. Again, the site plan approval that was first, that kicked this off, was a separate approval. It's been done. The Planning Commission passed that, and it shows a short-term project for a dorm and parking and some future projects. And again, the plat was also approved and recorded today, in fact. So this gives Center kind of a green light to move forward with this project for zoning, site plan, and plating, and hopefully for the future, they don't have to come back to the Planning Commission and get approvals, except for site plan approvals, nor go to the Board of Adjustments for variances or conditional use permits. So I'd be glad to answer any questions. Stephen has the findings of fact. Today's, I guess, the preliminary review of the zone change, and we still need to have two readings to formally rezone the property before we can move on to some construction phases in the near future.
So for the City Commission, it's just an update, correct?
Well, what we'd like to do is, just upon your motion and second and voice vote, accept the recommendation of planning and zoning, and that will provide us with the instruction to present an ordinance to you for a first reading at the next meeting.
Do I hear a motion to that effect?
I will move that we approve, no, I shouldn't approve the zone change. What am I approving?
Your move to accept the recommendation of planning and zoning.
Move to accept the recommendation of planning and zoning to change the 105.91 acres of Center's campus from the seven current designations to ICD.
Second.
A motion by Christian... A motion by Mr. Carter, starting with Commissioner Atkins. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor of the motion?
I have a quick question. If they make any changes or new buildings, they still have to present a site plan?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
The site plan requirement is still in effect, so there would still be site plan submittals, assuming the building's over 3,000 square foot, or 25% of existing building. But most of the time, yes, we'll still see site plan approvals and plats if we need to.
Any further comments? Seeing none, chair, call the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, if you'll give me a moment. This is Jamie Laye from Center College. I'd just like to commend Steve Hunter and his team at P&amp;Z for bringing to us this notion of converting the campus to a new, and I think a more appropriate zone. We were hesitant at first to try to bite off the larger project of rezoning the entire campus for a smaller development, but he convinced us it made sense, and he and his team were very cooperative and forward-thinking. I want to commend him for that, and certainly our local partners in helping us make this happen. Thank you.
Gladly. Our pleasure. Thank you, Jamie. Item 12 is the report from our city manager, Mr. Scott.
We missed...
Did we miss something?
Net 10, 11, and 12.
Oh, excuse me.
10 and 11.
10 and 11.
Steve still has the floor, technically.
Yes, Mr. Hunter, continue.
Sure. I got so lucky here, but no. It was mentioned, maybe doing an update, Planning Commission update, on a few items. And I'll try to keep it brief, but I've got some stuff here I think you guys will be interested in. And at your seat, I hand it out again, something similar to what you saw at the budget, that was that kind of work plan document. Probably not going to really go into that much. I also attached to that our recent adopted bylaws for the Board of Adjustments and Planning Commission, just for reference. And then we just did a fairly major comprehensive plan amendment that I want to walk you through some stuff. So again, I think it'd be better to walk through some visual things than to just walk through all of this. But I want to do mention that work plan and a couple items. The bylaws are listed there, that we revised those, and they're in your packet. There's been some just discussion about the bylaws in general. Those are the signed version that we revised in-house with our attorney and took to both our boards. They were more modern in nature, read a little better for conflict of interest and procedural things. So they're there for your information. If you guys want to ask me any questions on the bylaws, I'll be glad to do that. But one item on that work plan I think got overlooked a little bit, the budget, is this. We did revise an employee handbook. So those are personnel policies, the folks in the real world, but we call it employee handbook. It's a two-part document, and that's number eight on that work plan. We did that in-house back in November and December. So now the employees have kind of all the hard rules that stay for kind of ever on how we conduct our business and deal with issues, recruit or hire or whatnot. So that's the cover, the employee handbook, and everyone got one of those. But at the same time, we created a benefits manual that's a second document. That's the stuff where your leave time, and our health care, and dental, and all that. So that's a document typically we'll revise every year, as opposed to the personnel policies now staying kind of the hard rules. Our personnel policies have some interesting things about social media and policies, our vehicles, how we handle our vehicles, what happens, you know, typical stuff, you get in an accident. The Planning Commission, we didn't really have a hard set of personnel policies. They were somewhat dated, so we did these as kind of a kickoff, maybe with me getting on the staff. And again, that's the cover of that. We do all this stuff in-house, so it looks kind of hoaxy, I understand. But the interesting thing, that's formatted, so each year we can just change the color scheme, and it'll look like a 19 document. We'll just keep the same picture, but change it out, it'll look pretty neat. But we'll change that every single year, and that was something small, but I think it was a big deal for the Planning Commission staff to have some new personnel policies, and then get that benefits manual and streamline, and it's got some neat stuff in it. I want to get to the future land use, but before I do, off that work plan, you guys have already seen several things about the fees. I'm gonna show you something on our mapping at the very end. So item 15 on that work plan, it deals with the mapping. As you know, we spent some money with the Bluegrass ad through a contract, or really, in a way, it's kind of consulting role, them working for us. And then we have a nice online map that I'm gonna explain to you in just a second. We've got a new website, obviously. But a big item that we've done recently is this future land use map addition, and you guys got that at your seat. And I've got one page up here for a reason, and then some stuff you guys don't have in your packet, because I'm gonna show you some stuff. On this future land use map page, there was a number on the front page that stuck out kind of like a big question mark right here. And this sentence under future land use is really how we describe our county and our city, and what we think we're gonna be in the next few years. And it said, "The population of Bull County will grow at a stable but low pace, and by the year 2030," it said, "we'd have approximately 29,000 and some change in the county." Well, this was interesting. You know, when I was studying for my interview and whatnot, of course, I was looking at population trends, and looking at the comprehensive plan, and just looking at maps, what planners typically do. And I read that and thought, well, the population's kind of flat. But when I got on the data center's website, it was clear it wasn't flat. And what was interesting to me was, the number 29,000 that was used in the comprehensive plan in 2017 didn't reflect really what the Kentucky Data Center showed, and this is the document right here, in 2016. So my only explanation was, is maybe some of the population data was written back when they started the plan between 2012, 2015. But I want to show you some 2016 numbers right from the Kentucky Data Center. These are the folks that tell us how we're gonna grow and how big we are. This is 2015 to 40, and this was the 2016 document. And what it shows is, this is the state of Kentucky, and as you know, we have 120 counties. Eighty of those counties are projected to go backwards in population, not grow, or be flat, and those are in yellow or orange. The green counties are the high-growth counties, or the counties are gonna grow, not all high-growth. These are the high-growth counties, and these are interesting, because these are big. And there's a relationship for us. But there's Bull right here, but you can see Mercer, Garrett, Lincoln, Casey, kind of the folks all around us are all gonna go backwards in population. Yet Jessman, you can see the I-65 corridor real nice and clean, the 64 corridor, Northern Kentucky. These are the growth counties. So it's interesting that the data center showed we're gonna grow in Bull County, and I'm gonna show you exactly how much. But it's interesting the relationship. If you look at Fayette County, their projected growth to the year 24 is another 105,000 people, and look at Jessman's in the top 10, too. Little shout-out from my home county there, up there blasting up towards the top. I don't even know how they're gonna figure that out, but you're not gonna be able to drive to the Meyer store at some point. But it's interesting to note, these two counties, Jessman and Fayette, impact Bull, and impact our housing, and impact kind of everything. So it wouldn't surprise me if there's a little more growth in this area than what's being projected. But clearly, we're in a high-growth area of the county. And going back, and I'm gonna jump back to this, but going back to that document, it was odd that we put a number in there showing no growth. A little odder was that this document in 2040, 2030 showed this was our total population projection for the year 2030. And even when the plan was done, the number that was put in the plan was even below the 2015 estimate. So there's the census number for Bull County 2010. There's the 2015 estimate, and again, the number that was put in the 2017 plan was below that number. But there's our projection for the year 2030 for Bull County. And going a little further, I pulled this right off their data, there's Danville's population number, 2010 census. There's our 16, 15, and 16 estimate. And then there's the county number that I just mentioned. That's the actual 2016 estimate for the county and for Danville. Shows you the growth percentage, 5% for the county, 3.6% from 2010 to 16, and then from 15 to 16, we're growing another seven tenths of 1%. So it's just interesting, as we get into future land use map planning, how we're gonna grow the county, where we need to map the county, I thought it was interesting that Danville is growing, the county is growing, and was. This is our number, and we're two years later almost. And then you go back to the actual projection, through 2040, we're at about 32,000 people in the county. All that leads into why we had to amend Chapter Nine of the Future Land Use section, and how we did our maps, and why we need to fix the maps. Interesting side note, too, this household size, national trend, you know, folks are having smaller families. You see that household size declining. That's all over the state. Total households, you see that relationship between households, and again, that average household size. So that's just stuff maybe someone like me is interested in, but I thought you guys would be intrigued by that. And again, I thought it was interesting that the front page of our Future Land Use section, where we talk about where our county's going for the next 20-some years, had a number that was kind of missing the mark to some degree, and it led into the entire document. So I won't bog this down too much more, but there's the Future Land Use map for Danville. And we didn't change the Future Land Use map with this amendment, but we sort of did some housekeeping with the legend. I'm gonna show you something in a second. But this is our map, and it shows where we want to grow, in what areas, and where. And again, I think it's very interesting that if you study the map and look at some of the depths along the bypass, how some of the future land use goes in and out through here, how we sort of just, we don't have a general flow of a future land use. This looks more like existing land use or zoning to some degree, and it looks like we need to do a housekeeping exercise on our Future Land Use map. One of the items we did with this Chapter Nine amendment was fix Perryville's map. It's kind of a housekeeping. So Perryville's got a brand-new Future Land Use map, and you can see how the blocks are more defined. It's more generalized flow for land use, because land use is supposed to be generalized. It also has some new tools as far as mixed-use development categories. And again, I'm gonna go backwards again. We did not put any of these things into, we didn't change the Danville map. We did, however, in the legend, put the new mixed-use categories, so all the legends reflect the new tool that's in Chapter Nine, but there's none been allocated at this point for Danville. And again, this is future land use, and then I want to walk you through some of these new tools. Perryville got a brand-new map. This shows mixed-use residential. This is mixed-use employment. This is mostly low density. This is moderate density. This is commercial. This is public. Again, some stuff rolled back to agriculture around the fringes because we were splitting parcels. You know, this was one piece of property, and so we sort of made things flow a little better with the topography and the flow of the land. We also had an open-house public meeting and got input from the citizens before we revised this map. So I want to talk about the Future Land Use map. You guys have this at your desk, and I'll just reference some page numbers here. It's on the screen more for the public, and it'll be hard to read. But this is kind of a big change that's in this document, and it really relates to how we grow Bull County and Danville. So page 20 has a little reference here, and I apologize, because I haven't been actually looking at my notes. I'm just talking, but I'll look at my notes, actually. So page 20, in the Future Land Use section of the comprehensive plan, we really never talked about our map. So this now has some general language about what our map is, and how we use our map, how we amend our map, and how we follow the map. In this first paragraph, sentence on page 20, right under Future Land Use map, says, "The purpose of a Future Land Use map is depicting a generalized fashion the desired and expected future land use pattern." That's real important. The Future Land Use map is a general pattern. It's not a parcel-based pattern, and it's meant to just give us a guide to the future, but things change. And I think it was understood that our map was somewhat static, and every five or 10 years, we fixed the map, or we don't fix the map. And really, the map should be fluid and should continue to change, and we're gonna show you a tool that we put in the document that now allows that to happen. This page is just more general stuff about the flume, and the state law, and how we do zone changes. But it's important, at the bottom of page one, we start to reference that we are gonna follow those Future Land Use maps. Says, "The Future Land Use maps, which are figures 9-1, 9-2, and 9-3, which are Danville, Bull County, and Perryville, shall be used to determine the consistency which exists in future land use and development proposals." So again, the plan is, when a project comes in, we should look at the map, and we should follow the map. This page 22 was not in our plan. We had categories for years, commercial, residential, but we didn't have definitions. We've redefined all our Future Land Use categories, and not only that, we've gone to density-based for low-density, moderate, and high, as opposed to just saying the word "low-density" or "single-family." We now say "low-density" with a residential density of 1 to 5 dwelling units per acre. So in that case, we're saying you can do a single-family dwelling, but at some point, too many single-family dwellings may not be compatible with other neighborhoods. So moderate density takes us up to the 16 units per acre. It can be 5 dwellings, and can be single-family, multifamily, detached or attached, but it's density-based as opposed to low-density. So if you go back and look at the map, we left everything low-density, and it will continue to be that, and that means we'll stay compatible with neighborhoods. But if a developer someday wants to come in and say, "Look, I'd like to try some moderate density somewhere," this now defines what that product can be and how dense it can be. High-density would be above 16 units. The new category is mixed-use residential. That's kind of a pick-and-choose. That lets you do commercial, multifamily, or office, or any combination thereof. It's meant to be a flex district. And then likewise, there's a mixed-use employment, which is meant to be a job-targeted area. So if we go back to the Perryville map real quick, this area, they labeled mixed-use employment. It's meant to be an area where we'd create jobs, or put some type of manufacturing, commercial, or multifamily. You can do any combination of those mixed uses, by the way. So if we ever get to the point where we designate some of these categories on the Danville map, and we hadn't looked at it, the goal would be that there'd be an ability for a developer out here, for example, in the bypass, just not do commercial, but maybe do industrial or commercial, or apartments, or some combination thereof. If someone from out of town looks at our map right now, it clearly looks like that's all we want, is commercial here and industrial here, yet there might be an opportunity to do either or a combination thereof. So hopefully, these mixed-use categories will attract some folks to maybe try some different style of projects, and these categories define what those projects could be. And I promise I'll wrap up. Mayor's giving me that look, so...
No, I'm not. Don't blame me.
There's also some big-ticket items here, though. You guys know, when you do a zone change, historically, we look at the map. We talk about the flume. Well, we also had some, we've had some things in the book called Development Review Provisions. They were titled Timing of Development, some other terminology. We've consolidated these under one heading. But there are some kind of new things in here that I want to point out that, again, it's just maybe the planner and me, something I think the timing's right. But one thing that's interesting is, we talk about that we're going to follow the map, but we're also gonna look at these development provisions. And we have now three titles: General Guidance for Residential Development, General Guidance for Commercial Development, and General Guidance for Industrial Development. Well, the same paragraph leads off under all three, and talks about traffic impact studies. And I want to mention that for a minute. Most towns require developers to do traffic impact studies, or TIS, as it's called, as a condition, or as a kind of an additional set of information you submit with a zone change. We do not require that here, did not till last Wednesday. And what a traffic study does is, if someone comes in, and they're gonna generate over this threshold right here, 500 average daily trips, then they have to mitigate their adverse impact of their development. And you guys can think of several examples in town where had a traffic study been submitted. What happens, the way that really works, is you submit a traffic study, and you'll get some recommendations. A good traffic study will say, "You need a turn lane," or "You need to put in a traffic signal," or something of that nature. A bad traffic study sometimes comes in and say, "There's no, nothing's needed." You know, they'll put in a brand-new shopping center, or 300 apartments, and say, "There's no adverse impact." Well, you realize then, the developer kind of maybe cheated around the corner, and you make them go back and re-study some things. But typically, a good traffic study will show the impact of a development, a big development, and suggest things that need to be fixed. And then at the zone change level, the Planning Commission's job, then, is to make those conditions of approval. So we don't wait on KDOT to build roads and turn lanes. You make developers build roads and turn lanes with their development. If their development's gonna adversely impact, they're mitigating a negative situation. So we're gonna suggest that traffic studies come in for residential, commercial, and industrial developments, but it's still at a fairly high threshold. 500 trips, for example, would be, in a residential setting, would be at least a subdivision of 50 homes. Under 50, they wouldn't even hit that trigger point. For commercial, it's gonna be big stuff, as you can imagine. And for industrial, it's gonna be big traffic generators. You're gonna have to have a lot more employees. But in that situation, we want to see a traffic study, and we want to see the impacts of whatever the development. If it says we need a road widening, most communities try to tie that in with a development proposal, or get some kind of partnership so we can get that done in a time- proposal, or get some kind of partnership so we can get that done in a timely fashion, that we don't have to wait on the traffic light, wait on the turn lane, or wait on, on something else. There's another provision here under industrial development that's new. This is about our environment, and it says here, and I'll read some of this for you guys. This, again, these are just suggestions, we may not get these every time, but what we're asking for in an industrial development setting, if you're gonna do a proposal over 20 acres, we're asking that you do a detailed geological analysis and tie those in, so we can understand if there's gonna be any adverse effects to the environment, any groundwater, contamination situations, accidental spills, or whatnot. Really, what a detailed geological analysis will be is a Phase One environmental assessment, and we would ask that a, that in a big project, come in and do their due diligence to prove to us that there won't be any kind of environmental issues. And again, this, the idea of these documents are not to put a burden on the developer, but for them to assess any adverse impacts and any mitigation standards that we need to look at, and we would tie those in with the zone-change approval. So in the future, you guys may have a zone-change request with conditions that say the developer's gonna build 200 apartments, and they need to build a turn lane, and you guys would be approving the zone change with those additional conditions. So these are kind of big-ticket items that we're, just went into the conference of plan last week. And then I want to wrap up here and show you one other thing. The future land use map, again, this is where we really tied in to what we do, and why we follow the map under the state law. There's some exceptions, but we've added a process where you can actually amend the future land use map, so that's new. So now, there's a procedure where if a developer wants to come forward and amend the map, they have to meet one of these criteria right here. There has to be an inconsistency or mapping error, there has to be a public benefit, or they have to come in and show us through a compatibility assessment on how they're gonna amend the map, and why their project should be amended. And they basically have to show us everything about what they're proposing, and, and show that they're gonna be compatible. So that's kind of, that's kind of a new process for the community to amend the future land use map. But what that does, that puts integrity into the map, that puts consistency into the map, and that makes where the planning commission, we can't figure everything out today. There may be a good idea we're not aware of, there may be a market analysis, or reality that's coming to Danville and Bull County, and our map doesn't need to be static, it needs to be, the building needs to be able to amend it. So where we go back, where we head on the map, an area of the county that we showed, for example, residential, there may be somebody that comes in and says, "You know, I have a great idea for a commercial development," or a moderate-density. And the answer shouldn't be "No." The answer should be, "Well, turn in your map amendment, let's evaluate it, and if it's compatible, let's amend the map procedurally, then move forward with your zone-change request." So the future land use map becomes an amendable product into the future. And I'll wrap up with this, I promise. I just want to also just show some maps real quick. You guys have been looking at some kind of ugly narrative there. So this was the, the Whiskey project we did out on Lebanon Road, and this was just, what, a couple months ago or so? I literally had to take three of our paper maps and put them on the floor, and use my high-quality phone there, snap a shot of those, email myself a JPG, and we used that at the planning commission hearing. This was literally used. You could see, it was hard to see the zoning lines. This was an aerial, and there's the zoning symbols, it doesn't tell you what the zoning is. So I'm getting ready to show you guys some top-secret stuff. And again, we spent some money with the Bluegrass ad through kind of a mini consulting project, and we're getting ready to go digital with our maps. So this has happened in just a couple months. This is now the color zoning map for Danville. This is a paper map that I now can use digitally, but this is just a paper map that shows now Danville in color zoning. And I have to laugh a little bit out loud, the Bluegrass ads got their little disclaimer there, I don't know what it says, but I suspect it says, "Not everything's accurate," but we'll take their word. You can see, we got the new annexation on here already, we already got the new zoning out here on the west side of town. They used a bunch of these hash colors, I'm not a big fan of those. So we're gonna change our color palette a tad bit. But we're going digital with our maps, it shows the city limits in red. And this is important for developers that come to our town, or get on our website, to understand what we're doing. So this is a paper map, and that's just, that was just a fill-in for me, because I was done doing this a couple weeks ago. This is now where at least I can look up zoning. And this is the county map through the color map. Now I'm gonna show you again these top-secret slides here, and hopefully Ben doesn't take a picture of them. This is right off my desktop. We're getting ready to have an online map that's gonna go live here in the next few days. Again, looks similar to the paper map, but it's not. There's a layer link up here, you're gonna be able to click Layers, Parcels, Roads, City Limits, Zoning, Future Land Use. It's gonna show parcel information, or at least parcel lines, not parcel information. Gonna show color zoning, and then again, I zoomed into Danville a little bit. You'll be able to get the definitions of future land use as well as zoning, and you'll be able to see the districts. You can turn the arrows on and off, turn the right-of-ways on and off, turn the parcels on and off. And you can do a kind of neat slide option here, there's measuring tools and other things. So this interactive zoning map will be live here in just a few days. It actually has a top-secret website up there already, link that just a few people have access to, because we're, we're testing it as we, as we're doing right there. And again, you can see right on top of my screen is our login for our email, but getting on the PVA every day, our website. And again, we look up zoning, other folks are trying to look up zoning, and this is important, and we have this available to, to people to look up, so they can figure out what they can do, or not do, or if they need to amend their project, or do some kind of business. Yes, sir.
The zoning map you have now, I like it, because I can type in a specific address, and it'll put an arrow right where I'm looking. Will this do something similar?
Mm-hmm. You'll be able to search right here. Yeah, the problem with the zoning map we have today is you can put in an address, and it'll pull up a tab, and it'll say AR-1. A lot of folks don't know what AR-1 means, and if you don't know the address, you can't find it. So, and a lot of the property out in the county has a zero address. So what's interesting here is you can kind of scan if you know where you're at, you can put in a parcel number, or you can put in an address. And usually, folks know what they're trying to look up, but what they don't typically know is what these, what these terms mean. So there'll be better definitions there. And again, there's gonna be other things we're gonna add on that are more geared to the development community when they're looking at projects. I had a developer call me from Dallas last weekend looking at a site. You know, they want to see certain things. They're looking at setbacks, they're looking at right-of-ways, they're looking at zoning, future land use. What they really want is topo lines. That topography is really what they want to see, and it'll be easy for us to add that on there, too. So this is what we've been working with the Bluegrass ad on, and again, that sort of wraps up my presentation. I know it took a few minutes, but you guys wanted an update on what we're doing, and this is what we've been working in, and it's on that work plan, and these maps, and the future land use amendment, that, that was kind of a big deal. And I'm excited that the planning commission adopted that last Wednesday for the future land use map. And again, I'd be glad to answer any questions if you guys have it.
Will the zoning designations change to match the, some of those new categories you have?
The future land use map categories, those are future land use, and at this point, we haven't put any in play in Danville, but we can. So they're on the legend already, but at this point, we haven't started with the map, because it's, it's a pretty big task to figure out how we would streamline or generalize the Danville future land use map. I would think we might take one corridor, or a section of town, and maybe look at it. And you can easily see, you can just see little pockets of problems, like right here. I mean, you go from commercial, to moderate, to residential, back to a little sliver of commercial, there's not a depth right here to really do commercial. Again, what should have happened is this map should have been more generalized for maybe mixed-use employment. See how it kind of goes in and out, some different categories? So I think what we're gonna try to do is start with the Danville map, and maybe just start down here in this part, and then work our way slowly. But then, at the same time, let applicants come forward and propose amendments, and then the map will slowly, I think, start to take some different shape. And you would hope they would pick some of those mixed-use categories and say, "Hey, we'd like to do something in a certain area of town, we'd like to try some mixed-use residential," which would give them the opportunity to do, again, apartments, commercial, or office, or any combination thereof. So, that's a lot of stuff, and, and I've rolled through it pretty fast, but you guys asked for an eight-month update there.
It didn't take you eight months to present it.
Felt like it did.
What took you so long?
Again, if you guys have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Excellent work.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Item 11, Ms. Lester.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. You have your report in front of you for the month of March. We had 119 inspections, we issued 109 parking citations. As Commissioner Siri likes to note, we issued 43 business licenses, recovered six liens, and issued one code enforcement fine. You have a new updated condemned properties list in front of you. We took off 402 Perkins. That property's been sold, and liens paid, and renovations underway by the owners. I'll entertain any questions you might have.
You like to kind of run through this, don't you, real quick? So, you know, I made a comment before that ever since you've started this, it seems as though we're seeing some positive things happen, and maybe we just weren't able to see them before, but I think it's very encouraging. If we just look at your Page One here, if you look through the top four that you listed on inspections, you can see that somebody's reacted to your finger pointing and has taken on renovations. So I think that's very positive, rather than let facilities go into decay and just ignored, I want to get educated as well, and I was looking back here at the violations reports, I noticed that some of them are wrong side, left side, the curb. So that's the way I was brought up, and so, so you're given citations if they park on the wrong side of the street facing?
Yep.
Good. That didn't happen when I moved here 30 years ago.
Any other questions, Ms. Lester?
Thanks again.
Thank you, ma'am. Continue the good work. Now, item 12, City Manager Report, Mr. Scott.
Yes, sir. Mayor and Commissioners, my comments tonight will be fairly brief. Development of the proposed budget is one of the major activities that I and other staff members are currently working on. It's complicated and a little bit perhaps delayed, because the General Assembly is still in their final two days of activity, and they have a lot to sort through on Friday and Saturday of this week. And we probably won't know until sometime early in the next week, in terms of whether or not our request that we have some relief from the earlier pension rate contribution will be enacted or not. It did pass earlier in the form of House Bill 362, but was vetoed by the governor, as maybe many of you know. I think there's still the desire among members of the General Assembly, and hopefully a majority of those, to somehow work in that relief in the final bill, but we won't know that until after April 16th. So we are working on scenarios of the budget. We will have, just as a reminder to you and to the public, a presentation of our first preliminary budget discussion on April the 26th, Thursday the 26th, at 5:30 here, and that's just less than two weeks after the General Assembly will adjourn. So we have a lot to do in that two-week period of time to sort through and to come up with a projected and realistic budget for our community. And that's really about all I can say on that at this particular point in time.
If I may. Yeah. So it's not on the agenda, and I know that there was some interest in finding out if we have a tentative date for renaming Batewood Park. Do they have anything going on there?
I might defer to our city engineer who had that sign designed, and he probably's more current than I, because I was out a few days.
We are shooting for the 15th right now, and we were hoping to confirm that tomorrow, this week for sure, soon. And we were gonna talk with Mr. Atkins about that, and we were wanting to make that announcement around the, the activities that he, he brought forward at the last commission meeting on the 15th, and so we've not, that, that is what we're targeting right now.
But Mr. Trumbull thinking that day, in the March, then you go down to St. James, that's gonna take all day. So we decided we're gonna place the sign, and we're gonna pick out a Saturday to do the dedication.
Okay, that's good with us.
Yeah. It's taking a lot of, next Sunday.
Glad you chose that Saturday, Earl.
Right. Well, I was gone at the end of the week, and I know they were working on it Thursday and Friday, so.
Mr. Coffey, if that's the case, then we probably need to get a request to put something in the, our webpage, the newspaper, whatever, the fact that the sign's gonna go up, and that there will be something announced at a later date. I agree with the 15th probably gonna be too much, because we're not gonna be finished by 5 o'clock.
Right, and that's why we hadn't announced it. We, we felt like that would be a busy day, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And there's snow, so.
Anything else?
Did you, well, I'm Margaret Calhoun, I got two things to ask you. Did you check out the sewer down at J. Woods? The se, the septic tank, I guess.
We're working on that, we don't have a conclusion on what to do with that yet, but, but yeah, we're, we're gonna try to do something down there. I know what you're talking about.
Okay. Then I got one, the third. The tenants down at J. Woods complaining where the trail is, it is dark, and we need lighting. Because you have lighting on the other side of the street going towards BP. I don't understand why they didn't put no lighting going down to the trail. People walk at night, because it is dark, and a lot of things go on down there on the park, and it's dark. And Mr. Atkins, no, he, uh, Miss Doris complained him about it. A lot of them complained, but it is dark. That's all I got to say.
Can we do something about that, Earl?
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to look into a plan for that, and, and try to get an estimate, and try to find some money for that. But yeah, that's not an unreasonable request. I know as the Trails Committee, we've been discussing lighting and, and how to address that as the trails are expanded, and so that is gonna be something we're gonna have to figure out. And we, we were aware that the new section of trail from, from there over to Stanford Road, we know that's not lit, and we do know that's a concern. And so, yeah, it's, it's something we're gonna have to figure out.
Chief Gray, maybe we could deputize Ms. Calhoun? Do that? Huh? We'll get, listen, we'll give you a gun and one bullet, just like Barney.
I got a stun gun.
Uh-oh.
I don't doubt that of me.
I don't doubt that either.
Are we officially in Hear the Public?
Might as well.
I love it. It's just too good. It's too good. We are in the section called Hear the Public. This is the public's opportunity to speak on anything non-agenda-related. Mr. Smiley, I think you wanted to address the public, and as a, as a former city commissioner, you know that we like to adhere to a three-minute limit.
I'll never make it, but you can, you can put me off.
We've got people up here that will pull out a gong.
Okay. Basically, my name's Paul Smiley, I'm a Danville citizen, and this evening, I'm, I'm here to talk about, my passion of my whole career was fitness and good health, and that's what I want to talk about. I got three parts. Number one, training experience, so I can have a little credibility with everybody. Second, requesting consideration on upgrade, upgrading Bunny Davis facility and Millennium Park. And third, why is there a need for facilities to be upgraded and maintained, and how value it is for the community. Okay, number one, my background. I've really never shared with, with this with anybody, but I started my career at the Gallaudet University, the only university exclusively for the deaf in the world in Washington, DC. And I, I started there, and I was the head football coach, recreation director, and a few other titles. I, I was invited by the Kentucky School for the Deaf to come out here, to speak at a banquet and do some training with the teachers, which I did, and I fell in love with Danville. I went back to Washington, DC, and I told my wife, "We're gonna move to Danville, Kentucky." She said, "I don't think so." And I said, "Well, will you at least come and see?" So she came with me, we came to Danville. That was one month later. That was one month later. Two months later, I applied for a job, and I was here, working at the Kentucky School for the Deaf. While at the Kentucky School for the Deaf, my first 20 years, I was a recreation supervisor, athletic director, PE supervisor. And then after 20 years, I moved up in administration. So, the reason I say that is I do have experience in recreation. Number two, I'd like you to... I'm going to have to, so I can remember this, I'm going to have to read some of this. I'm going to recommend improving and upgrading the Bunny Davis Recreation Facility and Millennium Park. Give funds for maintaining the facilities. Prioritize the needs yearly, then proceed with the highest needs every year in the master budget. Financial decisions are tough. City services to the community are first. I feel that recreation is at first. It's important. Third, improving the Bunny Davis Facility is more cost-effective than buying and building a new facility. Facility is not that old. There's been a lot of buildings, a lot older than that, kept up and can be used for that purpose. Local private fitness businesses in recreation have come and gone in this area, but the City-County Fitness Center has had the opportunity for our citizens, and it always has it. We want to keep that. The next part I was going to talk about is the facilities. I'm not going to go through all the things that are in the Fitness Center, but there are many parts of that building, and they're all being used. And I think that they can all be upgraded and be used even more, even more. That was a whole page. A big plus is I think John Drake does a good job as a recreation director. He's in a position like a head football coach. Everybody knows what you should be doing or what you shouldn't be doing. And there's... You go in there and know everything about recreation. Believe me, he has the philosophy, the work ethic, interpersonal skills, leadership skills, budget development. He is your best consultant regarding recreation in this area. Okay. The name of the facility is Bunny Davis Recreation Facility. When children and adults enter the facility, they see a picture of one of the greatest individual citizens in the history of Danville, Bunny Davis. He was a great athlete. He was a great businessman, and he was a community leader in many, many areas. For example, he was on this commission, and I got to know him because he was on the Kentucky School for the Deaf's Advisory Board, and he was quite a man. Let's keep this facility maintained and high quality for the honor of Bunny Davis's picture on it, for all members of our community, especially the children, students, who can emulate and aspire to succeed following his example, right here in Danville. My last thing is you all have heard the word "space." There's a lot of different definitions for it. There's outer space, and when I was a young man, I used to tell people, "Don't get in my space." And there's a lot of space words in academia, but you probably didn't know that there's an acronym for space. S-P-A-C-E stands for something for wellness. Wellness for everybody on the planet, especially here in Danville. First one, S, spiritual wellness. As you know, that's religion and beliefs. In Danville, we have churches of all different types, and people have good spiritual wellness in this community. It can only get better. Second, space. I'm just about done. Physical wellness, exercise, diet, alcohol, drugs, and all that stuff. Danville Fitness Center is a good place to work on your physical body. A, academic wellness. We never stop learning. Now, how old do we get? There's four good school systems here. We have the best library in the state. At any age, you can go there and you can learn. It's a great place. Next letter is C. It's character. Character wellness. That's basically, you've got to do the right thing, make good choices. At home is where it's supposed to happen, but it really happens everywhere. And finally, E, the last word, is enjoy life. We need to be happy. We need to have good mental health. Physical wellness touches, S-P-A-C-E. And finally, I'd like to say the Bunny Davis Fitness Center and Millennium Park is the space where these wellness things can be had. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Anyone else? Mr. Finkie.
Hello, Mayor and Commissioners and audience. It's been a long time. Anyway, sorry. My name is Arlen Finkie, and I've been here for I don't know how many years, since 1973. I was working as a teacher, PE, teacher at KSD for 28 years, total of 60 years, including New York, and then 34 years of teaching, and now I'm retired. So, I'm enjoying it, but also I do a lot of volunteering, so I'm not totally retired. I sit on different committees. The Human Rights Committee, and what's the other one? Oh, yeah, the hospital. I know, there's a few. What was the other one? It was human rights, the hospital, the KAD. Anyway.
I represent the deaf community.
And I had two individuals who came up to me, and I said, "Well, you should come here." And they were like, "No, I'm shy." So, okay, I wrote it down for them. That person said, "It was wonderful to hear the good news..." "...for the nice playground at the water treatment plant." You know, that they're going to put that in there. But there also was other concerns. When you have a fence to keep children face from the Lexington Avenue traffic, that's one concern. And the second one, that also, you know, was shy, was talking about the sidewalk on East Main Street. Because they live across the street from the new sidewalk that was extended. And it's nice, and the mailboxes are there. But I noticed that the people who have the motorized wheelchairs in town, it's too narrow, so they end up on the street, same as in the old times. So, maybe we need to think about improving that sidewalk. Maybe make it wider. I was worried about that mailbox when I drove by. I would be surprised if the motorized wheelchair could hit the mailbox, actually hit the person in the forehead, and it can knock them off the chair. Anyway, that's really all. Any questions?
I'd just like to say it's nice to see Mr. and Ms. Finkie here. They haven't been here for a while.
Yes, I was here last month about the sidewalks on Baughman. I still... I'm back, and I'm going to get with them tonight about that. But my concern now is, I'm a school bus driver for KSD.
One more time, introduce yourself, please.
Oh, Karen Samuels. Sorry. I'm a little shy, too. Like I said, I have a bus that I drop off children, but it's on... I said I was going to get... I think it's Second Street. The daycare over... No, it's not Second.
Stanford Avenue?
No. It's... No, not that daycare. I do pick up a student that goes to KSD there, though. But anyway, it's where Third Street, it comes there by the PNC.
Little Lighthouse.
Oh, yeah. The Little Lighthouse, yes. Yes, anyway, I'm sorry. My main concern is, all before school spring break, and then today, when I dropped a child off, I had six people run my stop sign. What do I do to get a police officer or somebody out there to get them to notice? And it happens a lot. They don't seem to know what to do at my work. But it's, you know, even though my child is not crossing the road, they get off, because I let them off on the right-hand side, they come around my bus, and they come forward. And, you know, they're telling me that I have to actually get a description and the tag number. And, okay, I can get a tag number, but a lot of times the windows are so dark, I can't see the person. But I dropped the child off just about five minutes after 4:00. If it could possibly be a police officer there to write some tickets, it might, you know, slow some people down, I would hope.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll let the city staff address that and get back with you.
Okay. There's a bus coming the other direction. They can't go around that one because it's a big bus. I have a little bus. And that bus practically blocks the road, so...
This, obviously, is a unique problem to Danville. It's a national problem. It's been documented.
Oh, I know. I drove out of Louisville, and we did. I even had a police officer in Louisville do my stop sign one time, but I had a number on his vehicle that I could call. And I did. But anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
I thought of one more thing.
Yes, ma'am. Deputy?
Margaret Calhoun. It took about 15, 20 minutes from J. E. Woods to make a left turn with so much traffic. Do you think it need a stoplight right there? I mean, it's a lot of traffic.
Can we also make her a traffic cop?
I'm not lying. It will stick to that.
I will tell you, to get a traffic light, that is a Department of Transportation issue and that act of God is what that takes. But nothing we can't look into.
Yes. Second Street, it's getting heavy. Like on Houston Road.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Moving right along then into Commissioner Comments. Anyone?
Go ahead, Rick. Sure. So, anyway, this... We already heard from Mr. Dr. Miles about Earth Day, so that's coming up before our next meeting. That's a week-long event, and I want to give a little shout-out to our city engineer, O'Coffey. He's well-involved in this with a lot of educational opportunities at the water plant. And so, we're well-involved with this Earth Day celebration. Also, the first tour to VILL has been rescheduled for this Saturday, as we missed it. And if you all would, the Blue Jean Ball is this Saturday as well. It benefits Heritage Hospice.
Anyone else?
I just kind of want to know what Mr. Atkins knows about what goes on down there on the trails. Ms. Calhoun said you knew all about it.
She meant it had been reported to...
That's not how she said it. She said, "You know what goes on."
He might be causing the traffic jam, too.
That's the only thing Commissioner Collins heard all night. I have a few things I'd like to share. And the big one, I guess, is this Sunday. We have our ML King Community-Wide Program in March, which is this Sunday, the 15th of April, at 2:00 PM, and it starts at Trinity Episcopal Church and leaves there and goes to the Circuit Courthouse, and then goes to Center Point, and then it goes to St. James AME. And we have a community dinner at St. James AME Church that's free to the community. But you are to call 859-236-4484 if you'd like to have dinner with us. But more importantly, we have a great program planned for that afternoon and have some great presenters and some singers and a little bit of everything in honor of Dr. King. And to those who are in attendance, besides the free meal, you're going to get a list of human relations... A Human Relations Resource Guide identifying for you all the agencies in Danville and Bull County who do human relations work. And also, you're going to receive a calendar of upcoming human relations events that starts April the 4th, 2018, and goes all the way to October the 21st, 2018. Lots of neat things going on in our community by different organizations in the name of human relations. And tomorrow night at 7:00, at Inner County, there is a program being sponsored by... I'm going to get this wrong. By the Women's Network and Citizens Concern for Human Relations. The title of the program is Immigration. So, please, 7:00 tomorrow night, come out and join us for that program that's being done and open to the community. And then, the 21st of April is Earth Day, and I guess I would consider this an Earth Day project as well. But the Meadow Lane Cemetery, or the Kilby Lane Cemetery, depends on what name you use, they're sponsoring a cleanup day that starts at 9:00 that morning. That cemetery is... Well, it's in poor shape, but it has just the found rest in place of lots of my ancestors who participated in the Civil War and participated in the World War I and participated in the Korean War. And it's also the found rest in place of just some African-American citizens, Danville and Bull County citizens. And the attempt is to clean the cemetery up, to find out and identify its true owners, and then to try to find a way to maintain the cemetery, so it will be a place of pride to all of us in this city and county. But it's 30 to 21st of April. I think it starts as early as 9:00, and bring your working clothes and some gloves and some weeding utensils, and help us clean up the cemetery. Thank you.
Captain Dexter, are we actively trying to sort out deeds and ownership of that cemetery?
I believe you are. That's an item to be tackled by City Engineer and myself. I know that the Cemetery Committee has expressed an interest in seeing if that can in fact happen. But it is on the agenda to see how that can be navigated.
Would you care to venture some kind of a timeline as to what that'll take?
Until I have more facts about what the process is, I couldn't. I don't understand the... At this point, I haven't looked at deeds. I don't know who is vested with ownership, and I can't tell you what is even required in doing that. It could be as simple as a deed to the property, but there are also cemetery regulations and statutes that come into play from the state on what that process looks like. But if ownership is in question, it could be somewhat of a mystery of how that process should take place, but it may be one we need to chart. So, I don't know. It could be relatively simple, but it could be a year or two.
I just don't want to get lost in all the other things that we must do. Anything else?
Well, it's going to be some major work to restore it as a found rest in place that we can be proud of. It's going to take lots of work.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Moving right along, we'll go on to... Do you want to make a motion?
No, I don't want to make a motion. You don't need to.
He needs five minutes.
He needs five minutes.
I'll make a motion that Mr. Atkins needs five minutes.
Motion is made as a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
That's the second thing you heard all night, right?
Mr. Atkins, take your five minutes. To hear a motion... To hear a motion, we move back into regular session.
Yes, what are you all waiting on?
Motion's made. How about a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're back in regular session. Item thirteen is payment of the bills.
Thank you, Mr. Calhoun.
Have in front of you. Do I hear a motion to accept the payment of the bills as presented?
I move we accept the bill list for April ninth, 2018, in the amount of $600,422.36.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Any discussion? Oh, second.
I'm just kidding. I said it. You didn't hear it.
No, I didn't hear it. Commissioner Calhoun Atkins, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Item fourteen, Mr. Coffee, get ready. Item fourteen is Resolution 2018-04-09-01. This is the water line easement approval. Now, I'm going to ask you a question. Can, can we do these as a group, or do we have to do this one at a time? I know they're individual, but they're all the same easement.
Mr. Dexter isn't in here.
I think the way he has it set up, you need to do them individually.
Okay. Make it brief.
Can we discuss it?
Well, I'm going to discuss them as a lot.
Can we discuss them as a group, and then we can pass it individually?
That is correct.
I'm going to discuss them as a group. The water line project that you have on Corporate Drive extends the water line along Parable Road to the west. There are four easements in front of you. The first easement begins on a part of Dr. Shazad's property, and it extends an existing forty-foot easement on his eastern property that did not, that he originally didn't plat, that it will extend that forty-foot easement across his property, across easement number two, the Stewart Track, which is a narrow driveway parcel, and then extends it further west along the Jackson property. A lot of you from the highway will recognize that property as a Cavendale Farm area. So, it extends a forty-foot easement along Parable Road, on the north side of Parable Road, from, from essentially Bluegrass Pike down to the area where we enter in the right-of-way, the state right-of-way, which is where a lot of those driveways are. The project today terminates near Caldwell Road, which is where the Glasscock easement is. That easement is on the opposite side of the road, the south side of the road, and is a little bit, I believe, narrower easement, and it mirrors an easement that is existing on Caldwell so that there is a easement on the western part of that original track and then also the northern part of that track.
So, do I understand this water line is going to start on one side of the road, then go to the other side?
That is correct. The water line begins on Corporate Drive, and the termination of Corporate Drive today extends along Hughes Lane, Parable Road. The water line will intersect the water line coming along Parable Road from the intersection of the 150 bypass, extend to the west to Caldwell, Caldwell.
Okay. Do I hear a motion for Resolution 2018-04-09-01? This is the Glasscock easement approval.
So, moved.
And may I hear it?
Thank you, Mr. Atkins.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Calhoun. Yes, sir.
If you would like, you could pass all these together just in one resolution as the Corporate Drive easement resolutions collectively.
So, I'll, I'll amend my motion to include Resolution 04... Okay, one, two, three, and four, water easement, water line easements, all right?
We have a motion and a second from Commissioner Calhoun. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Chair will call a question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Those motions carry. Item eighteen is Resolution 2018-04-09-05, Highway Safety Grant Amendment Approval. Chief Gray.
Mayor, you approved earlier last year a, a safety grant for us. We have used that safety grant, ran out of money. They have allowed us to apply for another $3,000 for highway safety. We could use that possibly to help the young lady out with the bus incident. So, I'm just asking for your approval to apply for that extra $3,000.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Commissioner Calhoun, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Terry, for the second discussion.
He said this is going to help out the lady with the bus, the bus incident? Okay. Did you explain that to us?
It's a grant for officers to come in and do traffic enforcement.
I thought she was going to make bigger stop signs out there, something.
We can't do that on Fourth Street. Or, or Third, where she was at, I think.
We have a motion and a second. Any further questions? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Item nineteen is the property demolition list as a discussion and/or action. Mr. Scott?
Yes, sir. At our last meeting, the City Commission reviewed the report that our city attorney had prepared listing seven properties that were condemned, the status of those, and we had a fairly extensive discussion. You, as a commission, directed the staff, again, look at those and come up with a recommended plan of action to address your concerns, which really were stated, as I recall them at the last meeting, to, one, recover our city liens, two, to prevent our liens from continuing to grow and accumulate on these properties over time, and, three, to attempt to return the properties to productive use. So, looking at those seven reports, or those seven properties that were reported on in Dambly, this is a, an initial recommendation to you that you feel free to accept or to modify. But in looking at these, it seems clear that four of those have been condemned for a lengthy period of time, two have been torn down, two, two still have the structures existing on the property. The first one that I'm recommending that you do authorize our city attorney to take to court to recover the lien cost is that property located at 318 Caldwell Street. It was, the structure has been previously demolished again on November fourteenth, 2016. There is an existing lawsuit, pending lawsuit, and a judgment for the plaintiff in that, but it was never moved to, to conclude for an order of sale, probably because the amount of the fee that the tack lien, the tax lien exceeded the amount that could be collected. So, it's just hanging out there. In all of these, we talked the last meeting, that we probably, as we initiate court action on these, we won't be necessarily made whole, but it might be a way to cut or stop the bleeding and to attempt to return the properties to some productive use. So, that's the first one, 318 Caldwell Street. The second one is that property at 637 Old Chickertown Road. There are thirty-five liens totaling $17,382.1, which had an earlier lawsuit filed, but the case was dismissed for lack of prosecution on it in July fifteenth, 2013. The city demolished that property on November twenty-second, 2016. So, those are two clear cases of liens that have existed for a very long period of time that makes sense to me in terms of trying to recover and to, and to have sold at the master commissioner's sale and hopefully get some of our money back, and other lien holders will get some of their money back, but it might result in those two properties being acquired by someone else who would redevelop them and have them productive use. The other two properties, first being 222 East Martin Luther King Boulevard, that is on the corner, as you might recall, of, well, it's not on the corner. It's down from the corner of Stanford Lane, but it's near the school there, and it's near the corner of the Avenue of Champions over, over by the Deaf School. It has forty-three city liens totaling $10,046.11. It was condemned in 2007, but it's not been raised. There's no pending litigation. As I recall, and there are pictures in your book, I think, this time as well as last time, I believe that's a wood structure. Again, it's somewhat close proximity of school there, and to me, it makes sense to raise that the properties on either side are in pretty decent shape there, I think. So, that's the third one. The fourth one is located 702 Perkins Avenue, forty city liens totaling, again, $10,746.50. It's subject to a demolition order, but it's not been raised. That property is a somewhat nicer property. It's on the road to our senior citizens, or close to Gene Drive, I think, where Senior Citizens Center is located. It's a brick structure. It possibly could be rehabilitated. It's on the corner of an intersection on that road down there. But again, it's been quite a while with forty liens totaling over almost $11,000. It's going to take a while if we do receive approval from you to get quotes to demolish one or both of those buildings, but the recommendation is that you authorize proceeding to court on the first two, authorize the city to get quotes on the two remaining ones for raising. If you have a thought about not pursuing that and want to just do one or neither, that's certainly fine. This is an attempt to just shake the dialogue as we go forward.
Commission, what's your, what's your direction? Let me have a motion.
Can I ask a question here? There were seven properties we looked at last time, and I think the same seven came in our packet to take a look at. And so, you may have to educate me here a little bit, but out of those seven, you picked these four, which appear to me, and maybe I just don't understand it, would be the highest financial loss for us potentially. The other three kind of look like they'd be easy, and we actually may break even on that, but maybe I don't have all the facts. So, I'm wondering why you picked these four. It's more like a cleanup rather than...
Yes, it's the ones that have been out there generally the longest. They do have the largest lien amounts. The, one of the comments, as I recall, Commissioner, at the last meeting, was we need to, to, to attempt to recover what we can, recognizing we will not be made whole. There was also the somewhat competing goal of trying to prevent liens from getting that large. But I was simply starting with those largest ones and working backwards from there. And we may not be made whole on any of these, but certainly on the larger ones. But while we may not be made whole, we may also stop incurring additional costs. And those have been a track record of the longest that we've been having liens accumulate on those.
So, it'd be related to stop the bleeding, I guess.
Yeah, I would add to the city manager's comments that it would be, it will be unlikely that the city will recover its cost in any of these actions. So, your decision needs to be made on another value other than the collection of bad debt.
Well, to me, you mentioned, I think, too, that had had the homes demolished. What about 211 North Fourth, where it's actually, isn't that the one that burned? That's just a vacant tract now.
That's a vacant lot.
Seems we ought to include that one as well, because I'd like to see infill redevelopment if we can.
Again, as a, just a judgment, and I don't disagree with you, just the fact that we can't do everything at one time, and I was simply identifying a priority set.
I understand that.
And we would continue to bring this before you for additional action as we make progress on the work list, I guess.
Do I hear a motion?
Can I ask a question about 222 East Martin Luther King Boulevard? I can't get wrapped around my head where this was located. I know I've seen the building.
Across from the Sled Durham House.
You know where the daycare is.
Right near the little, what little alley it goes across? Is it close to the little pathway?
It's on the...
Oh, it's right next to the Sled Durham?
No, it's across the street.
It's across.
That front's just got me buffaloed, that's the front.
Up a little, sits a little above road grade, I think.
Commissioner, the house on the right of this photograph is at the corner of the Avenue of Champions and Martin Luther King Boulevard, and this is the second house.
And it's gray.
Yes.
And it, and it's sitting empty as well right now, isn't it?
I don't know about that.
Okay.
It should be. I mean, it's condemned.
No, no, not this one, the one right next to it.
Next to it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, one right next to it. Wow, that's a big old house, isn't it?
Well, it, you know, this property, as well as 702 Perkins, those look like they might be able to be saved and rehabbed. And I hate to raise something and add more liens on and get us further at a loss.
I do want to just mention one caveat. The photographs that I used are directly from the PVA website, which the date on which they were taken is unknown. For instance, the home I live in, the photograph was when it was built, which I think was in the late eighties, and not updated since that time. So, I don't know the date of these photographs. It's, these aren't current.
Yeah, I drove by all of them. They're in pretty tough shape.
It kind of seemed to me, Mayor and city fellow commissioners, that there was a comment that Mr. Scott made, which was a good comment, that we can't take them all on at one time, so... And we don't know what the liability is, and we're talking budget year and cutting back, et cetera, budget time, that maybe we should shorten this list to one or two and see what it does do in terms of cost, rather than taking on four.
One other possible number to note is I believe in the current fiscal year's budget, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think there was a specific allocation for demolition or code enforcement that was about $75,000. Is that accurate?
We had $90,000 set aside for demolition because of the discussion in the community for two years leading up to that in terms of clearing out or taking some code enforcement actions, that we put a substantial amount in the budget for demolition work. We thought we'd have to incur a large portion of that in the, in the demolition of Sutton's, but we persuaded through our code enforcement efforts the property owner to do that himself. So, we have not spent out of that.
So, we have the funds to do all four?
I would not want to say exactly what the quote would be for, for each demolition, but we should have funds for all four and then some.
Well, two of them have already been demolished, I believe.
Yes, right.
So, it's actually only two.
Okay.
What is difficult about this conversation is the fact that you can choose to demolish the property, which does in fact eradicate whatever issues put it in the condition that it's in. You run a risk of completing the process and having the property sold by the master commissioner and a future owner not bringing it into compliance. It will, in fact, be sold to them with the standing order that it has to be brought to code, or it will remain condemned. But at that time, it becomes a code violation should they not comply and bring it to order.
Would there be a timeframe on that?
No.
Just to show progress, sort of like we did the 311 Main Street?
That's correct. I mean, if, when it gets to, like, demolition orders, they say they must be complied within, within ninety days, but you can see that we're dealing with properties that have been subject to that order for ninety days exponentially.
I just feel like, well, I, I didn't drive by these properties. I meant to, but I just didn't get there. I just feel like, especially this one structure being brick, I feel like there is a potential there.
That one in particular, Officer Broach had informed us, is near collapse. I mean, it is an exterior brick structure, but it is nearing collapse. It has been stripped of all wiring, copper. Of course, all of those have been gone for quite some time. I believe there's significant roof damage that has caused compromise of the exterior walls. I'm not disagreeing with you that it couldn't be. I'm saying that it's been noted to me that the repair is, would be much greater than the photograph lends it to be.
Okay, so I'm a little confused. Are we, are, is the discussion tonight to demo these, or is the discussion to demo some and try to resell others?
The recommendation of the city manager is that there are, the first two properties have already been demolished, and he's saying proceed on those two to clean up the city's books, collect what you can, get them in some rightful owner who can make them useful again. And he's also recommending that the last two properties mentioned be, let you institute lawsuit proceeding, and also during that process, seek quotes to have them raised and raise them during the pendency of that action to recover what you can from them or not, but to abate the nuisance, so to speak.
So, the first two are vacant lots, basically. So I think those, those two would be the easiest to move on, and I think the other theory here is these vacant lots, maybe someone like Habitat for Humanity could get their hands on that and build nice homes there.
Our next conversation, should you proceed, will be how the city bids at the auction. Does the city, is entitled to a credit bid for its judgment amount, which you'll, you know, you'll see here, 17, be $20,000 probably dollars in both of those cases. Does the city in fact bid on them to its judgment amount? And if so, then you would have to thereafter declare them surplus and accept your own bids on them. Or you don't bid at all and don't take them in the city's possession and let them go as they may.
I think the city at an auction is a trauma trigger here.
Well, I just...
Well, particularly if you're not going to demolish the structure, it may be in your best interest to acquire them. Because if you're not going to raise a structure, there's no other way for you to control who in fact is going to be the eventual owner, and you could put stipulations on your auction, your own bid submission or bid acceptance of what would have to happen with those properties.
I'd like, if we truly have $90,000 in the books, this year's current budget, and it has not been touched, then I would be in favor of A, B, C, and D, and also in favor of adding 211 North Fourth Street, which has already been demolished as well, and proceed on all five of them. Let's get them all moving.
Is that your motion, Commissioner?
Yes, sir, that is a motion, yes.
I'll second that.
So we have the money budgeted, Commissioner Atkins, but we really don't know what the costs are going to be, so we might actually go over budget, wouldn't we?
Well, the bids would have to be, or the quotes, rather, could be reported to you, and if they were in excess of budget, like in anything, I think it'd be incumbent upon the city manager to inform you that they exceed the budgeted costs.
So then we would have another step here, basically, okay?
Potentially.
If it didn't fit within budget, city manager, just out of due diligence.
If it didn't, you just carry it over to the next fiscal year.
That's correct.
Yeah, and our rationale is that if we're going to clean up the city, and if we start looking at five places, two that are, still have structures on them, I think we're sending a message to people that, you know, we're coming down the list, we're walking down the list, and we're serious about getting it done. Now, the question is, we might run out of money, but that's another issue right now. Right now, you're saying we can afford these four. Has been called to our attention about 211 North Fourth Street, which really has already been taken care of, that we move forward on all five of them and see what kind of results we get. So the lot at 211 North Fourth Street might bring a little change.
I will say, that is one in particular that has garnered particular interest.
I was thinking we might come out better than hold on that one.
I would, I might, would prefer that we pursue the vacant lots first, since that seems to be a little more straightforward, and then maybe gather some more information on the ones that have structures, like, or maybe even some updated pictures, so that we could see whether we really want to raise those or not. So that's three vacant lots, I believe, right? We have 318 Co-Well Street, 211 North Fourth.
And 637.
637 Shakertown Road.
Let me ask.
There's already a motion there. That wasn't a motion, that was just a...
We do have a motion.
He has a motion.
And we have a second.
Would you like to amend your motion?
No, I think what you said says the same thing as the motion says, really. This is just telling them to move forward with it.
No, you said...
Yeah, I wasn't challenging, we're in discussion, and I just wanted to make sure that we weren't going over budget and that question was answered, so.
Yeah.
I believe in the philosophy of what this commission wants to do, all of us, and cleanup, but I also don't want to be going over budget. And if we have the money, then we've appropriated it, so.
And actually, while no one likes to go through the time expenditure of the demolition, it is, I will say, legally the only method of actually abating the nuisance. So if that's the end goal, then that is really the only way to achieve it without being able to guarantee who the eventual purchaser will be and his or her track record of success in rehabilitation.
We have a motion and a second. Are we ready to vote?
I have one more question. The motion was to pursue all five of these and to raise the two.
That's correct. If they're within budget.
If they're within budget, right.
But the, but the quotes for raising these will come before us again, so we'll have another chance to look at that?
No, I understood it only if it exceeded the amount authorized in the current budgets, which I would have to say probably will not occur with just these two structures.
The budget is there, so the city manager has authority to expend money as allocated in that budget. So it may come up in a report of what those actual costs were at his discretion, but it would not have to be subject to any vote of yours affirmatively if it's within the budgeted amount, which is likely for the city.
I'd like, personally, I would like to see some updated conditions of the structures, but I'll vote however you want to vote.
I think that information can certainly be provided to you, and matter of fact, it's probably been in past reports and would probably be easily produced for you on that recommendation. I'm sure, Bridget, you could probably gather that by the end of this week if you want to look at that, Commissioner Terry.
Mayor, I would say that none of these actions are going to happen very quickly in terms of getting the quotes in or raising the subject properties or even concluding all the court issues. So this could be a future report to the commission regarding the status at your next or subsequent meetings. It's going to take a while to do any of these things.
I was going to say, I prefer it when we're all comfortable with what we're doing. If there's no significant time crunch, if you can provide Commissioner Terry with that information, can we just do it next, vote on it next meeting?
We can, sir.
If that's okay with Mr. Atkins. That would make you feel better about your vote?
It actually would, yes. We can, we can vote on the vacant lots.
I have, I have no problem with waiting until the next meeting. I just, you know, spring is going to spring sometime pretty soon, and, you know, there's a good, good winter coming up to get some of this done. So I don't, I have no problem. I can withdraw my motion gracefully.
Or you can table your motion as an aside for that. You don't have to withdraw it. If you just agree to table your motion, it will come to you as presented at the next meeting.
She agrees, allowing me to table it, so I'll...
That's very good of her.
That's her first.
Very nice.
I feel generous tonight.
I believe the motion is tabled.
Okay.
I'll end the conversation with a quote that, "If not us, who? If not now, when?"
Yeah. Be glad I love your mama, that's all I want to you.
Do we need to vote on the table?
I don't believe you need to vote the table, do you?
I didn't think so.
We rarely do it. If we all agree to do it, let's just do it. Like I said, we use Robert's Rules of Order loosely, and not as...
We use Bob's Rules of Order. It's a totally different thing.
Yeah, that's right. It's a kind of an evil cousin.
Didn't want anything hanging out there.
Bobby, Bobby's Rules.
Bobby's Rules of Order.
Anything come before us, any executive session?
Well, I joke with Commissioner Terry, but that's good discussion, you know, we, there's no rush.
Nothing wrong with that.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Mayor, if you would...
Just don't twist my arm anymore.
If I may jump in real quick, we would like to mention, HDR couldn't be here tonight. We didn't have on the agenda the award that HDR was recognized for. We'd like to mention that, if we may briefly. The American Council Engineering Companies recognized HDR, the City of Danville's Water Treatment Plant in Louisville. A week and a half ago, for the water plant project, it was selected among the projects that were evaluated in Kentucky for all the engineering firms for the, that met the criteria on the, on the competition. Some of the criteria were uniqueness, innovation in applications, future value, engineering profession, socioeconomic and sustainable development considerations, complexity, and also successful fulfillment of the owner's needs. Our project, the number one project that beat us was the Louisville Southern Indiana Ohio River Bridge. It was a billion dollar project. Two other projects were red after us. We received a grand award. These two projects also received what was classified as the grand award, which, one was a Maker's Mark Distillery Project, which was a project financially in the same scale as ours. It was, it was an impressive underground housing of the barrels aging process, and also the loop, leftover loop at the New Circle Road and Versels Road interchange was also red after us. We were then therefore considered the fourth place project, and we received the grand award, which is the second highest award. Only one, one other company, which was the bridge, the Ohio River Bridge, received the grand concector award. So we've been recognized again.
And I had the pleasure of being there with Earl, and as we were, as they were going through, I'm looking at the scale of some of these, and I'm thinking, there's no way our water treatment plant's going to compete with these guys. So for us to come in where we did, I think it's a real, a real kudos to city staff and HDR for the design and implementation of that. When you get, when you get critiqued like that by your peers, and the competition is what it was, that's a strong, strong statement.
Yes, very good.
Thank you.
Well done. Thank you, Earl, for bringing that up.
Did you and Earl bring the check back to the city?
Earl's got it.
That check's gone if Earl's got it.
Anything to come before us?
You were no doubt inspired by all the other things that came before you, like Little Miss Kentucky and Little Mr. Kentucky and all these other things that we do here.
Do you hear a motion to adjourn?
No executive session.
No executive session.
Move to adjourn.
Hear a motion to adjourn in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, we adjourned.